Good evening, everybody. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Von Rittenberg?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Canastino?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sims? Councilmember Pataglia?
Here.
Mayor LaBras?
Here.
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act and JSA 10 colon four dash six and second notice having been published according to law with a copy on file in the city clerk's office and a copy posted on the bulletin board in City Hall.
Okay, would everybody please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go any further, I'd like to just take one minute of silence for the Earl Paramus and all the people there and the families and the children and teachers that were affected, especially the two that lost their lives. Mr. City Manager, the agenda, please.
Yes. Good evening. This is the council of a whole agenda for May 22nd, 2018. First on the schedule is mobility. This is a company that's looking for small cell wireless technology on city traffic light posts and utility poles. They can then sell the excess capacity to wireless providers like Sprint, T-Mobile, and others. Tonight, we have with us Greg Russo. Yes? Okay, we'll try...
Over there.
Okay.
The other side.
And they're gonna get up first and explain. Thank you, sir.
Okay, good evening. I'm Gregory Russo. I'm the regional manager for wireless data and mobility. Also with me is Terry Prikis, who does our permitting as a permitting manager.
Is the mic on?
Greg, is your mic on?
I don't know, is it?
Yeah.
Might have to get a little closer so everybody can hear.
Thanks for seeing us today. Let me give you a little history about what mobility is. We're probably the only privately-held wireless facility company in America. There's two basic cores to our business. One is a distributed antenna system where we build neutral host networks for the carriers to use. We do them in places where in-building coverage is really impossible, so we built to major venues, some of the ones that are recently in the news. We do Churchill Downs, which enables the crowd there for the Derby to be able to use their cellphones. We also provide network coverage for the 9/11 museum, which is mostly underground, so we needed an antenna system that would allow other carriers to join on. What we're doing for Sprint, who's our customer, is building what's called a series of small cells. These cells enable Sprint to gain coverage in areas where they normally would not be able to have any coverage whatsoever. Either topography would restrict it or the neighborhoods would restrict it from them building 120-foot monopole in a residential area, which is always difficult. The reason that drives this kind of coverage is the advancement in technology. As you know by now, you can watch the TV commercials yourselves, and you see that cellphone, making a cellphone call is not what's advertised. It's about everything else the phone can do. So, the drag on the networks is basically moving data. And if you can see on the one slide, you can see what people are using their cellphones for. They're using it to order food, cars, stream live video, Facebook, anything that a computer. It's basically now just a small handheld computer. To give you an idea, the best illustration I can is to what the data drag is. Picture you're in a supermarket, and you get your cart, and you're able to go up and down the aisles and get whatever information, whatever products you want. But then on your checkout, you find out that there's only two cashiers working. And now, all this data needs to actually go into two main silos. And so, what these cells will be able to do is offload a lot of that traffic. We're doing this nationwide. I handle just the New York, New Jersey markets, but we're doing it in even Hawaii, we're doing it in all 50 states. As far as looking for locations, we're very careful about trying to make sure our sites fit in with the community. So, our first review is to look for anything we can attach to our antennas to any existing structures. Usually, the structures are existing utility poles, since we have an agreement with PSENG to attach to their poles. Or if a municipality has available their own traffic signals or lamp posts, we look at those first. The second thing we'd look at is actually installing our own pole. Usually, the poles are typically just like a PSENG wooden pole. The heights are around 50 feet. Our antenna sits at the top, and our equipment sits alongside the pole. Right now, for Hackensack, we're looking at basically three sites for the 2018-2019 build plan. Those are all three, those are all attachments to PSENG existing poles.
And you have an agreement with PSENG?
To allow you to do that? Correct. And there's also a review process on the PSENG side, as we may select a pole, and PSENG will do their own evaluation to determine whether or not our facilities can actually be safely installed on their pole. So, we avoid poles that have transformers on them, solar panels, existing conduit that run up and set up the side of the pole. So, a lot of times when jurisdictions are questioning us why we're not using an existing pole when we want to install our own pole, it's usually because the PSENG pole is unavailable to us. As you get towards the back of the slide deck I presented, you can see what our antennas look like when they're attached to a lamp post. Our antenna is a small, three-foot antenna about the diameter of a soda can, and our equipment sits on the side of the pole itself. So, it's just basically two pieces of equipment. And then, last page, you can see where we're actually doing our own utility pole, how the equipment sits on a wooden utility pole. So, what we do when we're proposing this to municipalities, obviously, we look to enter an agreement, either an actual agreement or a resolution or ordinance that allows us permission to go ahead and install on the facility that we're looking at. Right now, the three sites that are attachments, we have already supplied the city engineer, Mr. Tenkate, with building permit applications and construction drawings, so he has them all ready. I'm not sure whether he's reviewed them or not, because we haven't got any feedback from him as of yet. But, that's pretty much our presentation in a nutshell. I'm willing to entertain any questions.
Could you just give us a high-level idea of where these three locations are? Streetwise?
They should be on the map.
Those pink ones?
Next, third page from back.
Where are these? So, it's...
Those little three little triangles.
So, primarily along First Street?
No, there's one on Summit Avenue and Golf.
There's a fourth one up here.
There's one on First Street between Atlantic...
Oh, two, three, okay.
And...
Gotcha. Two on, like, First Street and one on Summit.
There's one on First Street by High Street.
How do you choose the locations? Because they seem like they're pretty close together within the city.
The locations are done by Sprint's art engineering department. They will look and look at their own records to see where they're having complaints from customers as to inability. It's usually not an inability to make a cellphone call. It's usually a complaint that it's taking forever for something, you know, from data they're looking for, that they're trying to watch a movie and it's buffering. So, they get those complaints, and that's how they basically figure out where they need to cover.
Okay.
Well, besides the obvious, a better, I guess, cell reception and everything else, what is the other, any other benefits to the city?
The benefits are varied. If you have wirelessly read utility meters, all that data gets to be fed back through this kind of network. If you have wireless parking, where people are looking for parking spaces, or be able to pay a parking meter electronically, that data is usually backwalled through a network. For cities that use shot spotter equipment to locate where a weapon has been fired, all that data usually gets backwalled through a network such as ours.
Are there any downside environmentally? I mean, two of these are fairly close to where the high school is.
The power that's put out by those sites are probably even less than the cellphone.
And we also, just so you're aware, we have special counsel who specializes in this sort of thing, who's gonna be able to speak to us in closed session about any sort of agreement that we might want to enter into mobility. So, you know, specific questions where you have concerns, we have our own people who can address those as well shortly.
Okay. Any other questions from the council?
And so, and I guess, just to add, so ultimately, I mean, the goal here is to enter into some sort of, you know, agreement with the council in terms of going forward, and especially, you know, to resolve any open issues, which I'm sure we'll talk about the council, although that's the ultimate...
Sure.
...the ultimate goal of what's being asked for here.
And we've been in process, basically, probably for the better part of a year and a half, two years. So, it's not something that we've rushed into as far as identifying locations.
Anything else? Are we gonna discuss this? You said the attorneys and the...
Yeah, we have council to discuss, to discuss some of the contractual issues involved here in closed session, so...
Okay.
Because this does involve a potential, essentially, legal agreement between us and mobility. So, you know, questions regarding the terms of that agreement, get some guidance from you, whether, you know, you want to go forward, whether you have further questions, and if you do, the terms, and then our council can go back to them and work on, you know, putting together an agreement that we could bring back to you for approval at a council meeting in the near future.
Also, maybe it would help if we could get some references from some other towns that have done this, so that we can hear firsthand from them if there is any downside to this, or if they've had complaints, or what issues are. You know, if we do go into this, we want to go into it with our eyes wide open, that we're not doing something that's gonna negatively impact the quality of life for folks.
Sure.
I know, trying to improve their quality of life, but sometimes there's side effects to these things that we don't know about.
I can put it in writing for Mr. Kliman in an email, but just so, off the top of our head, we do, we built quite a few sites in Trenton, Newark, Paramus. As a matter of fact, the one in Paramus I know, because I pass it, it's right on Route 4, where, right next to the restaurant Chakra. It's on that side street, but I think it's Arcadia, I think it is.
Mr. Tenkate, I believe, is the engineer there as well, so I know he's familiar with it.
Yes, he's really familiar with it.
I think it would be worthwhile to just have some of that information, that we could reach out and gather some...
Sure.
...data from.
Is the signal bounced in from a satellite or from another source?
It's what, basically, we're trying to call it wireless fiber. Essentially, there's a piece of equipment that sits on the side of the pole, which is called a UE relay, for lack of a better phrase. It's basically a cellphone on steroids. It basically locks into a channel for an existing Sprint site that's already built and holds that channel exclusively.
Would this work in an area where there's absolutely no service?
Yes.
Yeah? Interesting. All right. That's it? Anybody else? That's it? Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Russo. Hey, with that, number two?
Yes, sir. Number two is a proposal and presentation from our beekeepers. So, I don't, I have not met this. You are, sir. All right. It's all keeps. Okay.
Good evening. I apologize for Frank and Mike. John, I'm sorry, we're not able to attend the meeting due to other conflicts of scheduling. My name is Sharita Suni. I am a Hackensack Comet since 92. I'm happy to say I was Coach Leo's, one of his soccer goalies back in my younger days. Anyway, the reason I'm here today is I've become very passionate, interested in beekeeping and the, what would bees do for our environment. My goal is to bring that conversation to the table so that Hackensack can join other towns who are supporting legislation to promote beekeeping and, more importantly, local beekeeping. So, if you'll pardon some of my pauses, I'm relatively new to this. This is why I had asked our local Beekeeping Association to join us. So, okay. Why is beekeeping so important? Well, personally, I became fascinated with beekeeping. I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, I'm a teacher at the local high school. I teach industrial arts, more specifically, building trades and residential construction. And as being on the STEM department, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, we went to a local field trip at the Bergen Community College where they were talking about all aspects of science. And I saw two local beekeepers talk about the bee life, and I said, what? I was so fascinated with every aspect of it. And as a woodworker, I said, why can't we do that in the building trades? We teach science through woodworking to our students. So, I've introduced some of that in the classroom. And then, as I became more and more involved with beekeeping, I learned that New Jersey is passing around the idea of limiting, regulating beekeeping, local backyard beekeeping in the state of New Jersey, which, of course, would be detrimental to our local agriculture and local, excuse me, local environment and gardens. So, the reason I'm here today is to talk a little bit about the local honeybee. Of course, there are more than 20,000 bees in the world. The one that we're most familiar with is the honeybee. It is, of course, also the most studied because it lives in a colony. The information I've passed to you is supporting material, but I can't go into detail into all of that because there's so much going on. So, the most common misconception that I get from people when I tell them that I'm interested in beekeeping, they go, ooh, I don't like being stung. And I'll tell you right now that if you've been stung, a bee does not want to sting you. It is so detrimental that we support bees because they support us. More than one-third of the food on your table on a regular basis comes as a result of the pollination from bees. And depending on who, which resource you refer to, from the time that bees go extinct, we have anywhere from one to, I'm sorry, three to six years before we go extinct. The food source will not be there. In areas of the world where bees are not so available, and also for crops that bees do not prefer, many companies use people with brushes and cotton swabs to pollinate different plants, which, if you can imagine doing that to an apple tree or to a cherry tree, it would be almost impossible. So, what does this mean? Well, the most important thing is that bees are going through what's called CCD, Colony Collapse Disorder, which is a little bit unknown, not a little bit, it's almost unknown because without cause or without known cause, whole colonies, thousands of them, are going wiped out without any signs of the reasons. And that's global phenomenon. But surprisingly, backyard beekeeping and rooftop beekeeping is doing surprisingly well compared to the commercial beekeeping levels. And most people don't even know that there is such a thing as backyard beekeeping. Currently, there is no regulation against keeping bees in your backyards. Of course, there's guidelines that you have to follow, but there is no law outlawing that. There's also cities throughout the country, and some even in Europe, where they promote beekeeping by putting bees in their rooftops. We have one such organization right here in Hackensack. Hackensack University Medical Center has put, as of last year, two beehives on their rooftops. And a little further out, Valley Hospital has put about 10 on their rooftops as a way of promoting the green initiative and gardening for the local communities. So, what does that mean? Well, there are, as of now, about 35 other municipalities and cities that have joined opposition to what New Jersey state legislators are trying to propose, which would strictly restrict beekeeping to beekeepers that have a quarter to five acres, that's for two beehives, and anything less than a quarter acre, you cannot keep a beehive in your property, which, of course, restricts so much of residential areas because who has a quarter acre these days? My goal was, of course, to present the issue to you guys so that you can hopefully come up with some resolution against it. I hope that from here on, we support beekeeping, pollination-friendly environments, so green gardens, restrict the amount of, excuse me, herbicides and other chemicals used in our gardens and local community areas, and also keep local agriculture strong by supporting locally grown organic crops. And I'll just say this in closing because I don't want to take too much of your time. I want to open it up for any questions that I might answer for you. But I'll say that, similar to the honeybee, there is not one thing that we can do as individuals. It has to be a communal thing that we do collectively to support each other. So, I love using models of nature into my classroom, and I tell my students, there's a lot that we can learn from other living organisms like the honeybee. Not one person is important. We, as a community, are important, and we together can make steps towards a common goal. And that's why I brought this to your attention tonight. I'll take questions if you have any.
Counsel?
I was just wondering, I was looking through Ridgewood's paperwork. The only concern I would have, my brother-in-law's actually a beekeeper, so I'm a supporter of this, but when you have a small piece of property, the example I think of is if you have a beehive right on the border of your property, and then next door is, you know, children are playing on their swing sets right there, or something like that, is there, do they have regulations saying it has to be a certain setback from their property line so that it's not really encroaching because the bees will be flying around on someone else's property?
So, as of now, and again, please be patient, my understanding is somewhat limited as I'm still learning a lot, but as of now, there are parameters where you have to maintain at least 10 feet distance from your neighbor. In addition to that, there are certain barriers that you must keep in place so that the bee's flight path would not go directly into your neighbor's swing set, for example, or into their swimming pool, so that you can direct them to go straight up. They have zero to little interest in sticking to their local area. They go up to five miles to collect the pollen and nectar that they're collecting. So, your neighbor's backyard is not what they're interested in. However, there have been plenty of cases where people have been negligent, or sometimes intentfully, you know, to an upset neighbor, or vice versa, they placed that beehive in a way that it would kind of get in the way of the neighbor. And of course, guidelines, regulations already exist to direct people that, for example, I have to keep my beehives at least 10 feet away from my neighbors. I have to keep restrictions that would direct my bees to go straight up as opposed to directly into their property.
Thank you.
Leo?
My sister-in-law is a beekeeper, and a good friend of mine at work is a beekeeper right near Woodridge who produces, he's been a two-time first-place state medal winner for, in their competition with his bees, with his honey. But it has a lot of advantages. I'll give you an example, one that a lot of people probably don't realize. I have a neighbor, aunt, store to me, who came down with this skin condition, and it was, you know, she was being treated by doctors and everything else, and she was told you need to start using honey from local bees, because what she had was picked up locally and probably environmentally. And sure enough, the honey actually helped her. So, because it was grown locally and, you know, it does have like a medicinal purpose. So, again, we'll research this and make sure there's no issues. I don't know even if we have any ordinance on this right now.
If I may add to the local effect, one of the little-known facts is that so many of us here who have allergies to the pollen of this time, it's critical, one of the great benefits to honey, but more specifically to local organic honey, that the bees process that pollen of the local vegetation that is around here, and they, when they process it and we ingest it, then we're taking that same pollen in an acceptable form, and we build our own immunities to that pollen that we're allergic to. So, that local honey is really, really critical.
All right, very good. Thank you for your time, and we will research it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Number three?
Yes, sir. Discussion is Greener by Design. This is a, just an update. We will eventually have a discussion, but I just wanted to bring to the mayor and council's understanding that Greener by Design is an environmental asset management company that was brought to us by Dave Hayes, our city electrician. And what they're trying to do is put a multi-disciplinary team of researcher, financial management, environmental planning professionals. By Greener by Design brings a comprehensive understanding of economic and policy, underpinning rapidly changing the environment, landscape, and fresh perspective. So, this basically coordinates energy, land use, community planning, economic and industrial planning, and water planning and management services, transportation, and fleet advisory. So, this company is looking at this more as a global picture than we're only looking at one phase of this. So, the long-term goal is obviously for the city to develop a plan that would be adopted and basically a discipline that we would follow. So, when I have more information and I have someone from the company scheduled to come in, we'll get the information to you folks previously until they have their presentation. But instead of just, and I'm trying to avoid doing this, but it does happen, coming in with information and just cold that there's no reference, never heard anything about it, and all of a sudden, we present it, not that we approve it that night, I just want to take this opportunity to give you something just to consider. And once I have the information, we certainly can have more of a discussion. Number four is the Atlantic Street Park Fence Sinage Update. The city's Atlantic Street Park, which is an absolutely beautiful park, unfortunately has created its own condition because the park is basically used for animals to defecate in, which has now spoiled the splendor of the park for our community events. Obviously, the city wants to maintain the pristine of the park because we have our events Friday nights and our concerts out there, and people come. It's one of the jewels of the city, and we want to maintain it. So, to keep up with that, we need to, you know, in one conversation, we're talking about creating a dog park, and the next thing, we're gonna prohibit the use of dogs because it now becomes the offense, offensive to people and residents and kids and people that want to picnic and, you know, use blankets and be entertained. So, that's a consideration. So, to achieve that, the conditions of Atlantic Street Park are this. Atlantic Street Park pergolas will be restained, and that's in process. We have the quotes, $7,600 to have gates installed, they're gonna be three to four feet high. This was reviewed by Fran. Signs will be picked up tomorrow, they're made and installed tomorrow, prohibiting the use of dogs in the park. The Parks Department will be removing any of the dead shrubs and raking the existing mulch, and we're gonna have a conversation with the landscaper that is in there working currently because I think we need some improvement in there. But I just wanted to bring to the mayor and council that we are working diligently to get this park up to speed because we don't have spring anymore, we just have winter, and we have summer. And our summer events and the use of that park is gonna grow rapidly, and I want to make sure that we're prepared.
I have a question, Ted. Are we gonna go right to the gates, or are we gonna try the signs for a while and see if that works?
We're gonna start with the signage first. I'm gonna put the assignments of our constable and the police department alerted to this condition because unfortunately, enforcement seems to be the only way we're gonna get people to understand because the neighboring building seems to use this as their walk park and other... park and other purpose for their animals, and it's, you know, taxpayers pay good money, and we want to keep our parks pristine. They're not 100% pristine at this point, but we certainly want to do so.
What would the fine be? Have we made a decision?
I don't know what the current fine is. I should have asked that question, I did not.
Yeah, I mean, it's, there's a standard fine in the park. I mean, I'll find it for you.
Right, I mean, does it say that on the sign?
It gives, walking of dogs prohibited on this property, ordinance number 117-1 is the citation.
Sometimes it has a little more meaning if it says there'll be a $250 fine. I mean, you know.
Give me thirty seconds, I'll have the answer for it.
No, but I'm talking about even on the sign.
I understand.
Ordinance is not right. That's not, I don't think that's the right ordinance.
That's not our ordinance, that's just a sample number.
That's just a sample, that's not our ordinance.
Oh, okay.
And I don't know the ordinance off the top of my head because I did give it to Jan.
I mean, I don't know how many people are going to take their cell phone and look up the ordinance to see what the, oh, am I going to get fined or am I going to just...
The ordinance itself...
You know, when it says there's a fine, sometimes I think that...
The ordinance itself is one, I'm sorry, is 40-17.
The chapter 117 doesn't have a specific, specific thing, it just, it's the standard fine under our city code, we have a penalty ordinance, so I think it can be up to $2,000, and actually imprisonment up to ninety days for community service, not that that would ever realistically happen, but...
Well, I would just ask that we would at least think about maybe putting the fine amount on there so folks know what it is, and maybe that's also a deterrent, and maybe could we reach out to the offending building owner and see if he'd post a sign like in the lobby entrance or something, just denoting that, you know, this is going to be enforced, those of you that are walking your dogs, because we know where it's coming from, that there's, you know, that dogs are no longer permitted in this park, and signs are being posted, and, you know, if you do this, you will be fined whatever, $250, whatever the number is. And that might help as well, you know, where people swipe to come into the building if they see that, or they're on their way out with their pet, they may, they, oh, I better find a new place to walk my, he was supposed to have dog walks in his...
He does have a dog walk.
So, that's what they should use?
But, you know, they like to go out on the grass. But, you know, what's a shame is we gave them their first chance was we put up, you know, bag stations and everything and places to dispose, and they just didn't use it. I mean, I personally have observed multiple times, people walking their dogs, and just the dog goes, uses the grass, and then they walk away. So, and it's unfortunate, but now it's going to be unfortunate for them, they're going to have to figure something else out.
And the proposal for this is a totally different thing. We know, residents have asked for it, we're looking to step in and work on the dog park. But that's a confined area, it's not where folks are sitting to watch movies under the stores.
Well, that's what it's intended for. But I think we're going to have to, and this is just my opinion, but the grass is so bad over there, especially in the one area, it's totally browned out, I think you're going to have to scalp that and put a new sign back in, just on the inside part.
Just to be clear, it's section 115 of our city code provides that unless a specific penalty is provided elsewhere in the code, it's a fine not exceeding $2,000 imprisonment for a term not exceeding ninety days or community service for a period not exceeding ninety days or in the discretion of the court, both fine and such imprisonment, or alternative community service. So, I mean, realistically, as I said, this is not the kind of violation that you're going to be imprisoned for, but so it's a fine of a, potential fine up to $2,000.
We should amend it to have an exact fine for your dog going into the park.
You could put on the sign, you know, fines of up to $2,000, and that would be an accurate statement.
Maybe it should even be an accelerated thing, I mean, first offense, I mean, if folks just figure, I don't care, I'll spend $100 if I get caught, and then, you know...
Well, look, I mean, you do have, right now, this will be in the discretion of the municipal judge and the prosecutor. If someone is found to have done that, it will go to the court. If the council wishes to prescribe some ordinances, we have specific penalties as opposed to simply a default penalty, which is what this section covers when we don't specifically say it. So, if the council, you know, says, look, this problem's not being resolved, and we want to start it out because, you know, theoretically, the judge could say the first fine's going to be $50, it's totally within his discretion, up to $2,000. If the council wants to say, first offense is $500, then we can amend that ordinance and put a specific dollar figure in there so that the judge does not have that level of discretion. You know, $2,000, by the way, is the maximum statutory fine you can have for an ordinance violation, but you have a lot of discretion from zero to $2,000 if that's something you feel you want to do. I mean, in some cases, I've seen that where, you know, there's a particular problem and you say, hey, look, we don't want to start it out at a potentially low number, we want it to be, you know, $250 first offense, $500 second offense, $1,000 third offense, but we would need to amend the ordinance to do that, to take away the judge's discretion.
Right now, it's the judge's discretion.
Right now, it's the judge's discretion, anywhere from zero to 2,000, again, plus, you know, theoretically, community service, I mean, they could do that, that's something that could happen. As I said, you're not municipal ordinance violations, you almost, even though the law provides for it, almost never you see anyone going to jail for any sort of, unless it's some insane type situation, very, very rare.
What does everybody else think? Do you think having a number on there would be a deterrent?
We said a number, $250, that's okay.
It's easy enough to amend the ordinance and just...
I would amend the ordinance just so it's definitive.
Yeah, I think it makes it a deterrent when folks know, hey, it's going to cost me $250 if I get caught.
First offense, $250, second offense, $500. So, usually in that case, the third offense is, you know, 1,000, you know, at that point. So, yeah, that's easy enough to do. We'll have that for the next meeting.
The other part is the fences themselves, obviously, they're not going to be locked during the day because we want people to have access to the park, it's just so they can open and close it, and we'll have to have... We'll have to have some type of language on there, signage on there, saying, you know, please close the gate when you're done, or whatever, but...
Hopefully, the signs work. I hate to see us have to put the gates, I wouldn't have to. Maybe if we put the signs with the fee, and folks realize, you know, that a couple of people get fined, that we're not fooling around here, we're serious, that maybe that would be good enough.
Well, my fear is if we resaw it, they go right back at it, and you've lost the grass again, because they've totally destroyed that, it's really bad.
And then again, like you said, it all comes down to enforcement. You know, I once did an ordinance in a municipality where we actually said if there was anyone caught violating it, we'd put them on our city website as a hall of shame, you know, and that's sometimes, you know, you have to do something like that at times to get...
Well, it's a shame, I mean, you have this beautiful park next to this new building, and they just abused it, and it's really a shame, and a few people really ruined it for everybody else, so...
Yeah, but if the gates can open and close, they just open the gate and bring the dog in and close it?
Well, that's really pushing it, yeah, there'll be a sign on the gates saying no dogs.
I will go with this time first, and then I will go with the...
See how we do, maybe we'll be, because it's a shame, because I drove by there today, there were people having lunch, sitting there having lunch, and folks at work there enjoy that. They don't want to...
Next.
Go ahead. Number five is the city park summer hours. There was some discussion that the parks for the city normally close at eight o'clock.
Nine o'clock.
I'm sorry, nine o'clock. But because the extension of daylight savings time in the hours for the summer, obviously we have, it's not dark by nine o'clock, and our parks and fields get used regularly. So, the suggestion is, and Mr. Climan's drafted this, a temporary extension of city park closing hours on a trial basis. And basically, what this resolution will offer is a closing time for all other city parks to be extended from 9:00 PM until 10:00 PM, starting on Memorial Day of 2018 and ending on Labor Day 2018. And Johnson Park will be open because of the tennis courts, and it's not surrounded by a neighborhood or the community at 11:30. After that, we will go back to the normal hours, but we're trying to make sure that we use the best use of our resources in our parks. The other thing that I will advise is that the city of Hackensack, DPW, has been cleaning the bathrooms in our city parks Monday through Friday. We've struck a partnership with Friendship House, and Friendship House will be cleaning the city municipal park bathrooms on Saturdays and Sundays, so our bathrooms will be clean seven days a week. This will hopefully adjust and address the issue of our bathrooms because unfortunately, currently, we clean them on Friday, and then it goes all the way till Monday. Some of our parks and some of our recreation gets used a lot, we want to make sure that residents and visitors alike have a good experience, so we're going to commence that effective immediately. Number, I'm sorry, council?
That's okay.
Number six is the Prospect and Beach Crosswalk Update. There's been some discussion and some comments about that we really like the traffic light at Beach and Prospect, but there was some suggestions made that the timing may be a little off. So, our traffic bureau's looked at this, and we suggest adding additional five seconds to the walk time, making observations again if more time is needed. So, the traffic bureau is watching this, but we're trying to get the proper balance to make sure that our pedestrians are safe going across there, and we certainly don't impede the flow of traffic or motorists in that area. So, we are addressing those issues. Discussion is the Shade Tree Commission. We're having a tough time with our Shade Tree Commission. Someone has now, who was the chairperson, resigned from the Shade Tree Commission, so we're short a leader and we're short a member. So, we're looking desperately to find somebody that's passionate about our Shade Tree Commission and our trees, and we need to put this group together. The city has also hired and retained an arborist, so we're trying to make sure that we continue to follow this program. So, we need a little assistance from the public and our residents to get some volunteers to help us so we can maintain our shade trees and the replanting, or certainly the safety of trees that need to be removed.
We did have somebody who was interested, but when they were interested, it was full, but now that we have the opening, we've contacted, I think we contacted them either Thursday or Friday of last week, so we're waiting for a response. So, that may take care of the one open spot, but we still need a chairperson.
Right, so I'm meeting...
Do I need the sponsors?
It's another volunteer there.
Okay, I'll get your information, and we'll have a battle promotion here, field promotion, because we desperately need to get this moving. The other thing is I'm meeting with the current, I guess, self-appointed second-in-command, Mary Walsh, to make sure that we meet the criteria because there's some timeline and some things for the city needs to complete so we can continue to stay on board for making sure that we follow the tree replanting and the issues that we're responsible for. Thank you so much for your service. Number eight is the resolution for utility company accountability. There is a resolution asking for support. Basically, it states, "For the purpose of holding utility companies accountable and to provide for the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities, with a mechanism to fulfill their mission to the utilities do not provide to restore critical service in a reasonable timeframe by allowing the municipality governing body to request revocation of their privileges or of their franchise territory." So, this is a supporting resolution to make sure that our utility companies are responsive to, one, the committee, and, two, the residents that it serves, and this is the supporting resolution. This was forwarded from the township of Wykow. To be considered. Number nine is the Recreation Summer Programs, Recreation Online Registration. The city has the ability to use Community Pass, which is another company that helps with the registration and also the controls of these programs. There's also Jersey Watch. I personally am not that familiar of all the particulars of how this works, but certainly our rec department is, but I guess what they're looking to do is to find something that matches for the service of the city so they can do online registrations and also alert if games are closed and things to make this more helpful to the parents and to the programs. These online registrations will certainly save the city time in staffing because of the, the basically hand-touch of everyone that registers, when they can just go online, tap the button, and send it to us, and they're now in the program, and we have this. So, we're looking at these options, and hopefully, we will have a decision, but I have to say that one of these companies basically serves several of our neighboring communities. So, because everyone is used to that service and likes service, and it seems to work well because obviously some of these teams and families have children that play here, but also on other teams, it might be in our best interest to find a common thread with these communities so we can provide the same level of service to all of our residents. This also brings up an opportunity for me to explain that the city of Hackensack was notified that the Board of Education is replacing the roof over at the high school, so the pool for the city of Hackensack that we normally use for rec in the summer will be closed, so we will be utilizing our splash parks for that ability for our children to find someplace to cool off and play. So, all of the details of that has not 100% been worked out, but we've been notified that, it appears that the pool will not be in use for the summer for the city of Hackensack because of the roof being replaced and the possible injury to people or having people walk by or through. So, Board of Education has notified us that we won't have that as a resource for this summer.
We need to, before we go to number 10, which I'm going to excuse myself from any discussion if we're talking about that, as far as the summer program, we need to notify because the parents who have used it through the years, if they're used to being at the pool, they need to make sure they know that their children aren't going to be at the pool and will be at the splash parks, and where they will be. All right, so we need to maybe backtrack a little bit on any campers who have signed up, and make sure they're notified.
I will work with the rec department and Jackie, and we'll get this notification.
Yep.
So, everybody is aware of it. The number 10 discussion item is pulled.
Okay.
Will not be discussed, so you will have to excuse yourself, mayor. And let me make sure, somebody has a comment, go ahead, Megan, I just want to check one thing and make sure that I covered all my... I believe that would complete the city manager's cow agenda.
All right, with that, any motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Ron Rudenbergh.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Constrino.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Taglia.
Aye.
Ray Allen Bros.
Aye. Anybody from the public would like to speak, please come forward, give your name and address, you will have three minutes.
Richard Solik in Hackensack, New Jersey. With respect to the item you just pulled, I think the next time you list it, you could put in the words post-community agreement, because I had to go back in some old minutes to find out what this was about, and then I recognized it, just a suggestion. A few months ago, basically, last time I was here, I had some comments regarding the city's apparent position regarding garbage collection in your redevelopment areas. I strongly suggested you have your city attorney look into it. I'm not asking you what your position is, but I want to know, did that at least happen?
We did have discussion over the...
I guess what I'm asking, I don't want to know your position, but do you have a position regarding whether, if you sued for it, you have a position you're going to take, good, bad, or indifferent?
It was relative to it being within cider rehabilitation zone, if I remember correctly. I mean, that's what we're...
Because I don't want you to give up the family secrets in terms of...
It wasn't...
Did you follow up on it? That's really all I'm asking.
It was discussed with the planning board.
It was discussed with the planning board, because we took it to Planning Board Attorney. It was discussed with the planning board because we took it, the planning board attorney, Joe Mecca.
Okay.
And discussed there and he didn't see any issue with it because it was an area needing rehabilitation and most of them are areas that need redevelopment.
Okay. Well, you looked at it. So that's all I asked you to do. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I can look at the camera on the way out.
Good evening, Kathleen Savalotto, I'm here at Hackensack. Few things, talking about garbage, we got, we got shortchanged again. The garbage collection in the summer was supposed to be May 1st until October 1st, and you shortened us a month. You did it last year and you keep making it shorter. You went to June and you ended in September. It's gross, although this May, it can't, wasn't hot, but most, I should say all towns that do it just in the summer, it's always May to October, and you shortened us two months on both ends. There is a problem with closing the park at, at dark, and all parks are not the same. Like, you know, the ones that have the lights on, David's program that goes on at night in the Carver Park, fine, they're, they're, they've always been late. But Pulaski Park, which is a very small park tucked amongst little houses there, you can't, if the thing says closes at dark, the reason being is that we can't monitor these, these parks. We can't ride past and see that everything's okay, kids hang out for the wrong reasons. So Pulaski Park, Columbus Park, and Polyfy Park, they always close at dark because of the fact that who's going to monitor them? Like, who's going to monitor to see if the dogs are going to the bathroom? We're going to post a person there to watch the dog go to the bathroom? You can make all these rules you want, but unless they're enforced or monitored, they don't mean a thing. So the parks, you know, if you want to say that, most of, there is a sign that says no dogs allowed, park closes at, at dark, and a couple of other things, no drinking and no smoking. We have a general sign that we have most of the parks. But I strongly recommend that Pulaski, Columbus, and Polyfy close at dark. And then the other ones that have the lights for tennis purposes or whatever can stay open, and, and they're monitored because you have teams going on, you have the coaches there, you have people there. But these isolated parks that don't, it tends to be a place where the kids just hang out and not do the right things. I think you have to fine tune that a little bit.
I agree with that. And we can monitor it and we can make certain parks close early.
Right. I mean, the parks are mostly used during the day, those are the ones, because like, but they are closed. They don't want, they don't want kids playing basketball to hear boom, boom, boom at 10:00 at night at Pulaski because it's a very small park. And Columbus Park too, you tend to get, the kids hang out there and it's, it's dark and it's not. Unless we have park rangers that I've been asking for, for the last 10 years, and you had a park ranger there that somebody could watch everybody, then it's fine, but it gets to be a little seedy if there's no, no protection. So that's what's, what I have to say for this part of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Regina De Pasco, Parker Avenue. I'm wondering if it was run by the police department as far as keeping the parks open. I mean, we're inviting people to stay out later, 11:30 down by the river there, Johnson, you know, by woods, by whatever. Has, I want to know if it's been run by the police department. And it does get dark around 9:00, and that's why 9:00 is closing time. But the liability, additional liability, keeping it open is, is a concern. You know, if somebody has a permit for certain hours to do something, that's a different story, but just keeping it open and not knowing who's coming in, an extra hour, an extra two and a half hours in one of the parks, that's, um, I don't know, that's a little risky. I'm just curious if the police department had an opinion on it because somebody's going to have to be there. Somebody's going to have to be there. It's even, it's dark when you walk away from the park. If you walk to the park, you drive out of there, you go to your car, it's dark. It's a liability. And in, um, as far as transparency and full disclosure, I'm asking that it be reviewed that Mr. Sims recuse himself from any, voting on anything that benefits his private business, which would require disclosure, which is anything with parks, keeping the park open. His business uses a park. I'm asking that that be reviewed too.
Anybody else from the public like to speak? Seeing no one from the public, motion to close.
Offer.
There you go. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Hey, need a motion to go into closed session?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed.
Whereas the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack deem it necessary to discuss certain actions under section 7B7 and 7B8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, which pertains to matters falling within attorney-client privilege, ongoing litigation of personnel matters concerning the employment of a current or prospective public employee. Whereas the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack have the opinion that such circumstances may presently exist. And whereas the mayor and council wishes to discuss the following issues, personnel matters, ongoing litigation, matters involving attorney-client privilege, matters involving the purchase, lease, or acquisition of real property, any pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiations. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack deem it necessary to exclude the public from this discussion. The outcome of the discussion will be disclosed within 90 days or at such time as the interests of the city do not require confidentiality.
Well, obviously, as we mentioned before, we do have the, our council to discuss the situation with mobility. I do believe we have a resolution on for a workers' compensation settlement involving Mr. Brown. I'll briefly mention that. And anything else that comes up in closed session, we'll make a further announcement at the end of the session.
Okay. Thank you. See everybody at 8:00.